Myself again, I'm from BVA.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, September eighth at six oh two PM. We will begin tonight's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Housen.
Here.
Councilman Burr.
Here.
Mayor said.
Here.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all rise, please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not see anyone here who's making a conviction at point in time. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Secondly, motion. I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to let you know, uh, Councilwoman Perrow has joined us.
Okay. Thank you, for the record, six oh three. Uh, next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted, or the consent agenda items approved. There are no items moved in the consent agenda? Mr. Clerk, should we have anyone sign up?
I can't hear the mayor.
Sign up.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like you're, I was sorry to, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. You're, you're going in and out, we can't hear you consistently.
It's pretty bad.
Hey, we.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we had one sign up, Austin Watkins. Okay. Looks like he may not be here, but the discussion topic says, thank you for clean energy resolution and pursuing an electric fire truck.
Okay, I can tell you, Mr. Watkins is in the, uh, attending room.
My apologies, Mr. Watkins. Fix that right now. Mr. Watkins, if you could hear me, you're gonna be able to unmute yourself. Two or three.
And if you say your name and address for the record, you'll be recognized for thirty, or three minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is Austin Watkins. I, can everyone hear me okay? Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I don't wanna take too much of your time. Um, so I'm here on behalf of, uh, my organization, the Idaho Conservation League, and I really just wanted to thank you all for, uh, I watched the, the recording of last week's, uh, meeting where you talked about the resolutions supporting Idaho Power's commitment to clean energy, and then there was the discussion around the electric fire truck, and this is all really exciting news. Um, ICL, we have about, uh, thirty thousand members, a lot of them live within the Treasure Valley, uh, Boise, Meridian area, and we're really excited to share the initiatives that all the cities are doing. Um, but it's especially excited to share this with some of our Meridian folks, and, um, just wanted to thank you all for doing it, and, uh, I really appreciate it. Uh, also just introduce myself, put a face to the name. Um, you know, if there's ever anything we can do to help out with some of the stuff you guys are working on, we're always more than happy to, to help out and, um, help push these initiatives. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if folks have them, or I can let you get on to your business as well. But I really appreciate the time to, to talk today. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin, this is not a time for Q and A, but we appreciate the conversation and the information you provided. All right, if there's, if that was our last item, Madam, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that was the only sign in.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to the action part of our agenda. Um, item twenty-five is a public hearing for sixteen twenty-five East Bentley Drive, H twenty-two dash zero zero seven eight. I will open this public hearing with staff comments. And turn this over to Alan.
Uh, good evening, counsel, Mr. Mayor, Alan Tiefenbach, uh, Associate Planner with the City of Meridian, good evening. So, this is a proposal for an annexation in the zoning to allow a forty-eight hundred square foot office building, uh, and a commercial lot. Here are the zoning map, the future land use map, and the aerial. Uh, property is currently within the unincorporated Ada County, zoned RUT. Uh, you can see here on our future land use map, this property is recommended for commercial uses, and this is an aerial map. As I talk, I've, I've put together this site map to sort of help describe this. So again, the subject property is at the southeast quadrant of South Locust Grove and East Bentley Drive. It presently contains a twenty-one square foot house, which is what you see here. Self Trust Place, East Bentley from South Locust is the only way in and out of this property. So the, the, all of these kinda end in cul-de-sacs and dead ends, this is the only way in and out. Presently, there's an unused spur of East Bentley that runs along the north property line and terminates just before South Locust Grove. This here is kind of this unused spur. Immediately to the north, south, and east of this property is low-density residential, although over to the west on the other side of South Locust Grove, is highly intensive non-residential uses. This includes the Renaissance High School, the Idaho Cottage College of Osteopathic, osteopathic medicine, which is across South Locust Grove. Uh, if you go to the south, you have pretty intense commercial uses such as a movie theater, some gas stations, uh, your typical commercial and retail. Uh, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan recommends the subject property for commercial uses, and it recommends, uh, mixed use on, to the east of this property. This is to sort of, uh, provide a transition for the residential areas to more of a non-residential area, and then to eventually the higher intensity commercial. Uh, sidewalk already exists on this side of South Locust here, uh, although the applicant will be required to install a twenty-five foot landscape buffer. I've provided some pictures to help describe this a little better. So here is the site looking down South Locust Grove for the south, and this is the subject property here. Uh, the adjacent property is over here, that's right across the street to the east of this, and we're looking down Bentley right now. And this right here is that stub street that I was talking about, sort of a no man's land, and again, this here is the subject property. So the business proposed with this annexation is presently located at tw- uh, two thirteen East Fifth Avenue in Meridian, in a thirty-eight hundred square foot building, they share space with several other tenants. Uh, the existing business leases about thirteen hundred square foot of available space. Uh, the applicant stated the size and configuration of the present building does not lend itself to the existing operations, and there's no use for, or no room for expansion. The applicant intends to construct and own a larger building designed for, for these particular operations, which is an engineering and a survey firm. Uh, they, they, again, they want to be able to have a larger building that's built for the particular operation. Uh, it would allow more flexibility in workspaces. A single-family residential is not allowed, uh, in the CCC zone district. Uh, they, they would have to remove this existing house as part of a condi- of the conditional use. Uh, in addition to the, th- this is the original building that they wanted to build, and this is that forty-one square feet. In addition to this building, there was some discussion from the applicant to eventually build a second commercial building to the north. Uh, we worked with the applicant a bit to get a, uh, site plan that is the most efficient design for this, so the parking would be wrapped in the middle, uh, buildings are pushed closer to South Locust Grove, so you're looking, uh, it's got more of a view of the buildings than of the parking. The, the applicant is also, uh, in addition to the site plan, the applicant has also provided elevations, which you see to the east. Now, these are only conceptual, staff has already expressed, we do have some concerns, um, with the, the types of materials that are being proposed with these. Uh, they're, they're showing sort of more of a metal, and metal can't be allowed as a primary, uh, material, uh, per our architectural standards manual, but this at least sort of describes what they're gonna look like in general. I think it's important to mention that these buildings are shown as one-story. Um, i- if they develop this site, they will have, it, part of the requirement will be a development agreement, that's part of the annexation, and, and if you look at one of the conditions of approval, it talks about that the site and the elevations will generally conform with what is being shown in the hearing. So if they're showing a one-story building, uh, they can't build a five-story building, or, or do something that's vastly different than what's being, uh, applied to here tonight for you. Uh, one of the concerns that staff had was this area. Eventually, before they can build this building, before they can develop the lot, as I said, they're gonna have to remove this house here to the north. When they remove this house, this house, staff had concerns with this sort of sitting empty and vacant and becoming overgrown and sort of a no man's land. So one of our requirements is that the applicant will have to cede this, this particular area, and they'll have to maintain this until such time as they build this second property. Uh, this applicant was heard at the, uh, August eighth, two thousand and two, uh, twenty PC meeting. Nobody showed up to testify on this, but we have received several, uh, letters, we received, uh, received one before the planning commission hearing, we've sev- uh, received several more. Uh, most of the concerns are related to, um, traffic, uh, that, uh, there, there's been some opposition, uh, to the comprehen- to the comprehensive plan recommendations for commercial in this area. Uh, there's been some concern about what the potential height of these buildings are, and the potential use. And, and I think I did mention that the, the, the use at hand right now, the reason why the applicant is, is in this process, is that they want to move their, their building, which right now, uh, is a engineering firm. So we're talking about, I think they said twelve employees, your typical eight to five type jobs. It's a, it's a pretty low-intensity, uh, commercial professional type office. Uh, with that, the planning commission recommended approval, as does staff recommends approval, with the conditions as are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Alan. Counsel, any questions for staff at this point?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Housen.
I understand, Alan, that, uh, the applicant will be required to install a twenty-five foot landscape buffer along, uh, South Locust Grove. Uh, I was just curious, some of the concerns expressed, uh, in the letter, talked about having, uh, landscaping and access points, curb, gutter, sidewalk on trust. Is that what is gonna be required for trust?
Uh, yes, sir. The, so the applicant will be required, so, so the, the sidewalk and the curb and gutter already exist right now on South Locust Grove. They don't have the landscape, so they will have to, uh, to apply a twenty-five foot landscape buffer. And also, a, along trust, and this is one of the requirements of ACHD, they're gonna have to, uh, do a ten-foot buffer, curb and gutter and sidewalk along South Trust Place as well. They'll also have to do a twenty-five foot wide buffer to the south directly adjacent to the residential.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Um, thank you, Alan, I, I guess one thing I'd like to understand, uh, I understand they're building one building right now, and we're being asked to approve this annexation. What future approvals would happen before a second building is built? That just be administrative matter? Um, there's a lot of sensitivity about the future use, given the neighbors' concerns.
Uh, that, that is correct. I- i- if this were approved now, then the second building, as long as they stayed, uh, within what the, uh, the requirements of the UDC are in the zone district, it would be a certificate of zoning compliance, which is an administrative process. Again, they would have to generally follow, uh, the development agreement. So they couldn't, uh, get a one-story building approved, and then build a five-story building, and their, their site would have to generally conform with the site plan that you're looking at this evening, Ms. Counselperson.
Thanks.
The use, uh, I would have to turn that to the applicant. I, I'm not sure if they know at this point what use. My understanding, we're talking to them, and they're looking at some kind of professional office type uses.
Mr. Mayor.
One second, Deputy Chief. Counsel, any further questions, uh, for staff at this time? Deputy Chief?
Uh, sorry, Chi- uh, Mayor and City Council. Uh, Alan, just a quick comment, uh, I have never seen the site plan before. Uh, it doesn't meet the fire code, so we need to make sure that gets addressed before it gets approved.
Of course.
That, that would come to you, Miss Bon- Mr. Bonjorno. It's, it's very conceptual at this point, so I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't meet all the fire code. We would just make sure that generally the configuration and the orientation and the parking complied with this.
Okay. Uh, Counsel, any questions for the Deputy Chief based upon that comment? Okay. Then, is the applicant here with us? If you'd like to come forward, uh, we recognize for fifteen minutes, just say your name and address. Are we doing it here, Chris, or in the room?
Mr. Mayor, we can do that at the podium, unless we run into trouble.
Okay. All right.
Uh, my name is Clint Hanson, uh, two thirty-one East Fifth Street in Meridian, Idaho. Um, we are proposing this for a flex space, office space, for our, we do land surveying, which is hand-in-hand with civil engineering. Um, so we'd need the garage spaces for field crews, uh, survey trucks and stuff, and then the office space for our drafting and, uh, more technical things that we do. Um, we, it's ideal for us to do this because we've, we've looked, you know, in the area, we really like to stay in Meridian, we've looked in the area for a lot of flex space in the past, and just haven't found much that's conducive to our type of business. So we finally decided to try to purchase property and build something that would, would be good for us. Um, and splitting the lot will allow us to recoup some of the cost of, of the purchase of the property. So wait, uh, for the north lot, we're not, we're not sure what the use will be, but like Alan said, it would be conducive to the development agreement that we'd, we'll have to agree upon, um, business use and conducive to the CCC zoning that we're proposing. Um, we do basically, yeah, just day-to-day, eight to five, or, you know, six to three type hours for our, our guys. We don't have guys coming and going all days and night, and weekends were usually closed. So it's pretty conducive to the neighborhood. When we had our neighborhood meeting, they expressed a lot of concern, mainly just with the comprehensive plan that the city has, not necessarily towards our business. They weren't opposed to what we were doing, if we didn't have to deal with the annexation process. They just don't want, or don't like the annexation coming closer and closer to their area. Um, and I think it was, was their concerns. Um, uh, do you have any questions for us regarding this? Like I said, it was, our, Alan said, it's really conceptual at this point, but we're, this is what we've landed on for, for now to, what, what, what the city would like to see with it closer to, to Locust Grove and, and the orientations and everything. We'll have to certainly review for the fire code if we have to do a turnaround, or what we need to do, to do there. So that wasn't part of our process yet, so.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Housen.
Mr. Hanson, uh, have a quick question, this is a flex space, you do have trucks coming in and out. Approximately how many trucks and vehicles that people commute in are gonna be at this, at this office structure?
Um, we plan for four survey trucks, currently we have three field trucks, and we have presently ten employees. So there's usually three or four of us that are out at the office all day, and the rest of them are out in the field, and just, you know, leave in the morning and come back in, in the afternoon, or done for the day, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Um, thank you, Clint, for your presentation. Uh, I wanted to just get clarity, is the intention that each of these, um, facilities, or, uh, each of these businesses just be one individual, single user? There's not an intention that it will be divided into multiple types of businesses?
Correct, for this, the building that we're proposing on the south will just be our business, um, not any lease space or anything, just us occupying the whole thing. And then if we either sell the lot to the north or develop the lot to the north, we're not sure if it would be like a multi-use commercial, or, or what it would be at this point, we don't, we don't have that nailed down yet. Counsel, any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just a, a, give us a clarifying question. Uh, in your testimony, so you, you indicated, you know, and I think you touched on this at planning and zoning, about, uh, eight to five, six to three, maybe, you know, in the, the week early on, on Fridays. Can you just share for the council, kinda like what the, that use would be? I mean, my, my assumption is that use is happening within the, the four walls of your building. I am somewhat sensitive to working at six AM and creating a lot of noise or disturbance for, for your neighbors. So if you could just kind of articulate what that use would be, be helpful for me as well.
Okay. Yeah, typically, for a normal day, that, you know, the ones that are arriving at six are just trying to get out and do the field work before it gets too hot, so that would be summer hours, and they just come and upload information into their, uh, survey equipment, the data collectors and stuff, and just load the trucks up and leave. So we're not doing a lot of maintenance or any kind of noise type stuff, it'd just be parking, going in the office, loading the stuff up, and then driving away. And saying when they return, they just come and park, and then download the stuff into the computers, and then leave for the day as well. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Madam, Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone that's signed up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we only had one online sign in, they didn't indicate wishing to testify, but they are in the meeting. So I would say when you ask if there's anyone else, we, they can choose.
Yes, so if, if you would like to testify on this item, you can please come forward and, uh, testify. If you are online and would like to provide testimony, if you can choose to raise your hand function at the bottom of Zoom, and we can bring you in to testify on this application. Seeing no one who would like to testify, I'd ask the applicant if they'd like to make any final remarks on this application. Okay, I'm seeing no requests, so Counsel, um, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, throw it back over to any further conversation or actions on this item. And I, I guess the one question I would have for Alan is, um, what is the long-term intention? If you could go back a couple slides, uh, with the, um, with the road, kinda, kinda, you, that one's a great example. Is that road, right now in the property, intended to be vacated? And that segment between there and the proposed roundabout to be developed? Or what is intended with that section of the property in this area? What can really be done?
Uh, sir, are you talking about this area here?
Yes, and north up to the roadway.
So, we, we do know that, uh, ACHD is working on putting in a roundabout here. I, I do not believe that they're gonna widen Bentley anymore than it already is. Um, we've talked to the applicant about whether or not they wanted to vacate this portion. Uh, we talked to ACHD about that. Uh, ACHD did not really express any concerns whether or not it was vacated. My understanding is the applicant at this time doesn't wanna vacate it. Uh, certainly, if somebody, we, we actually even approached him about whether they wanted to annex the entire thing and just take the whole property, uh, but they weren't interested, and ACHD didn't express any concerns either. So at this point, we don't know what's gonna happen with that northern road. All we know is that it won't be used, uh, for the access, for this particular one, the access is going to come in off of Trust, uh, place from the e- or, sorry, from the east side of the property.
I, I only mention that because, you know, not knowing where the Deputy Chief and the fire code issues go, but if you're gonna put two buildings on the site with, uh, drive-through space, it would seem a lot more practical to orient the buildings, uh, to be parallel with Locust Grove in this location rather than horizontal, and go through that vacation, the other property. That's just my non-planner looking at what this is gonna do, and with that roundabout being proposed in that location, I'm really, I, I don't know or have any concept for what that's going to do to this property. I don't realize there's a roundabout that was proposed here, but it makes it really weird thinking about where and how this eventually gets access under this proposal.
I do know, uh, with some, some discussion that occurred a little later this afternoon, that there has never been any concern for any other road to be punched in directly to South Locust Grove. Uh, the access to this area is gonna continue to occur from where it is now. They're not gonna be providing another road into Locust Grove.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Housen.
On, on that point, is there cross-access required to the property to the north from this parcel?
There will be, um, it wa- the, the, at, at this point, we're just getting the annexation and the, uh, rezoning, but when the applicant comes in to do a CCC, that'll be one of the requirements, is that they'll have to provide access to the northern property.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up.
Councilman Borton.
To the mayor's point on the, the layout and design, I think to whatever might facilitate, the only access, if anything goes on the north, will be through the cross-access from this parcel, so the parking and layout hopefully can facilitate that, because there's no other way to get to that parcel. Long-term. Doesn't look like it, at least.
There, two, two accesses in on the east side, uh, both coming off of South Trust Place. I, I do not believe that there's any proposal to do the access to the no-man's-land road.
Right, but, my point being that, that this would need to facilitate cross-access, whether it's drive aisle or some mechanism to allow the northern parcel to be utilized.
That is correct. But when they came, when they, it, when they, so, so right now, the way that it works is there's one large lot, and then there's a teeny tiny little, I don't wanna call it a spite strip, but there's a sort of a second little teeny piece. When they come in to do the boundary line adjustment, which would divide these into two pieces, part of that, that's technically a plat process, and part of that plat process would be requiring them to actually provide a cross-access easement. They would have to do that, so when they sell, if, if and when they sell out that lot in the future, that, that both people will be able to have the same, same access to either lot.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Uh, maybe a follow-up for Alan. Um, so if we approve the annexation now, you know, would the development agreement give us any type of assurance that the second building would be a professional office, or as to what types of use would, would be allowed there? I guess I'm just, I'm concerned about the potential for a heavier use that might not be appropriate, and we only have one bite at the apple with the annexation.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselperson Strater, there is not right now a restriction on that being only professional office, but certainly that is within your purview to add that to the development agreement if that is your, uh, desire.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I apologize, I had an interruption here at my home, and I did have an additional question for the applicant, and since we haven't closed the public hearing, I, I wanted to request that I might be able to ask that question.
Absolutely. The applicant would like to come back forward.
Thank you very much. Um, you had mentioned, um, the public testimony that we've received in writing. Um, I've read through that as well, and I was hoping that you could comment on some of the, the, um, concerns by the neighbors about, um, pedestrian safety along trusts, and, um, there being a lot of, of, uh, people who walk and, and children who bike on that street from the residents that are to the east. I thought maybe you could help give some reassur- reassurance about, um, I, I know we talked about how many vehicles are entering and leaving, but, um, you know, it, I, I understand, I understand the concern about that being a different, um, capacity of vehicles coming and going than there would be a single residence that, that, there. I mean, if you, even if you have, um, let's say twenty employees total, if you have two businesses there, just as an example, and still quite a bit more traffic than just a single home that's there. So if you wouldn't mind sharing your thoughts on that?
Yes, certainly. Uh, Trust Place currently just goes south to a dead-end cul-de-sac, so there's not, I mean, not a lot of traffic as far as pedestrian traffic that I could imagine, but ACHD is gonna require us to put in sidewalk on the-
put in sidewalk on our side and, uh, additional set landscape buffer. So they'll have, you know, sidewalk there, they can walk on the sidewalk instead of in the road. And plus, we'll have twenty-five feet from this current center line to the, to the right-of-way. So we'll be, Trust will be a little bit wider and safer. The edge of pavement where it is currently will be about the lip of gutter for our new gutter line, and then the sidewalk will be five-foot sidewalk behind that. So it'll be about seven additional feet of sidewalk and curb and gutter that they will have access for to be on that portion of the property to, for pedestrian traffic. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor M. Pro.
Um, mostly. Um, now, I know, I know you can't project exactly what that pedestrian traffic's going to look like, but just, this is a unique, uh, this is a unique location, and I know that the comprehensive plan shows this as CC. Um, but it is, it's just an interesting situation when you, when you put this type of business and that large of a building into an entirely residential, um, place. And so, um, yeah, I I, I don't have any more questions. Trying to just gather my thoughts about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
While you're here, I guess I will ask you to comment on, Councilwoman Strader made a reference to, uh, possibly, um, limiting some of the uses for the property to the retail office uses only, um, within a DA. Is that something that you have any comment on?
Um, well, for us personally, we would like to keep, you know, that northern lot as open as we can for potential development and purchase, because ideally, we would like to sell it if we can, and that gives whoever would come in to develop that the option to, to meet with the city and develop it, you know, and have a lot of different options than just strictly professional, or, I mean, with the development agreement, we're already limiting a lot of the potential for this property that I know the city has. Talking with development services and the city and the planners, they have a lot of, I mean, they're really excited about this property and becoming a really nice property for the surrounding area and development. So I guess, I mean, we try to be as conducive as we can to the requests made already for the layout and everything. This is originally, this is like the third layout we've come up with for, for this after working with the planning. Originally, we didn't have it laid out like this at all, but, um, we're trying to do what we can to be conducive to what the city wants, and I mean, that's all we can do.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
Here's the rub on that, that I don't disagree. I, you know, um, and, and the challenge becomes, right, with the, with this type of zoning, which could allow some more intense uses, the city could be in a situation where they maybe take pause and say, for that type of commercial use, I don't know if this annexation's appropriate. Um, I don't think that's a, maybe a, the best transition, even though it, it could be zoned to that. So this is really the one and only time that the city has to, if it's going to approve a zoning and bring this in, that this is the only opportunity to constrict those uses
Mm-hmm.
um, within that CG zone. I think that's why you're getting the question and perhaps some hesitancy if there's any scenario where parcel to the north could be used for something much more intense in scale or more traffic, for example, then we get, we grow in our concern for the transition issues and compatibility with the neighborhood. So
Right.
I think that's why the, the middle ground might be, if this goes forward, let's ensure that we've got some limitations on the, the scale of what might occur in use and intensity.
Mm-hmm.
So is that, in light of that explanation and concern, does it still seem like would you be able to, to agree to constrict those uses in the north? Or are you adamant that it needs to be potentially anything and everything to the north?
Well, I don't think it needs to be anything and everything. I think we're already constricted already with this layout. My understanding is it has to be pretty much conceptual with the layout that we have, so I don't know what other uses would be a potential problem, um, with the CC zone with this type of layout. Uh, the building would have to certainly conform with this, with this layout and, uh, other than professional use, I don't know what else. What use would be a concern that would fit this conceptual layout, I guess. I mean, to say only strictly professional, I would have to look and see what, what that really involves to be only strictly professional. And that, again, that's putting a huge limitation on the property for potential uh, development. The CC zone already has a lot of limitations already, and so does this conceptual layout. So I, I guess I would have to meet with the city and discuss that further, I guess.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
Maybe for, to clarify the example, and Alan or Mr. Neri, you guys can, can comment if, for example, a restaurant use uh, wanted to go in there, which is a much different type of user. Um, I don't know if there's a, a good example of the unanticipated scenario where an end-user comes and offers an ungodly sum, and you want to sell, and they can use it now in a way that we didn't envision.
Euroshack.
Euroshack. Something like that, right? And, and it's not your fault, right? You're gone, but in the scenario that it's sold to somebody, that we don't want to miss that opportunity. I think that's where the question came from. So I don't know if there's an example of kind of a parade of orables that could occur.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Morton, I mean, what's not uncommon of use of flex space in, in Meridian at least has seen, besides storage and some of the more industrial places that have it like along Franklin, is, um, dance studios and gymnastics academies. And those tend to have a lot more intensive use of, of traffic. Um, and it's fairly common. There's, okay, Danic Gym is right down the street. There's pretty, Meridian Gymnastics Academy is also down Locust Grove as well. So, I mean, that's a, that's not an uncommon use of that large of a flex space, is that type of thing. So that would have, probably have more of an impact on the neighborhood, because of traffic.
Our building to the south is, I mean, going to be occupied just by our company. We, I mean, I'll be there till I retire, you know, for twenty years at least, so uh, as far as on the north, yeah, I guess that could be potential problem if it was flex space and it's not desirable for, that's what the city would want in that use, I guess.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor M. Pro.
Yes, sir, uh, maybe this is a question for Mr. Neri. Um, is there a way in which we can put assurances in the development agreement, not necessarily limiting what goes in there, but approving what may or may not go in in the future?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, certainly, as Counselor Morton stated, I mean, this is the opportunity to limit the types of uses on that property that you would require. They had to come back for a amendment to development agreement to put that in. So, um, whether you, I don't know that you want to get too granular in that, but certainly limiting the type to whatever type of uses that you don't want, like restaurants, or if you don't want gymnastic studios, there without at least another conversation with the council in the future of that. Um, again, it's kind of hard to envision all the potentials that could impact. I don't know with a roundabout there. At some point in the future, that will also have an impact on the type of business that I want to locate there as well. But, but yeah, this would be your opportunity now at the development agreement stage.
No, I, Mr. Mayor, follow-up, please.
Counselor M. Pro.
I totally get that, and I understand, um, how important this, this could be. But my question to you is, instead of laying out all of the things that we want or potentially want at this space, could we just say, you know, a future council would have to approve, or whoever, um, buys that lot from this gentleman would have to come to council, uh, to, um, get, you know, for our approval, I guess is what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Counselor M. Pro, yes, I mean, certainly you can limit the uses and exclude uses that are allowed in a CC zone, uh, and then therefore then require a development agreement amendment, uh, to allow it in the future.
Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
I think that's kind of where the, the question started was, if, for the purpose of proceeding today, it may be limited, and a future user who comes in and wants to do something that's principally permitted in a CC zone, but the council wants to require that future user to come and ask to amend the DA to allow that use, because that would be the one time where then that future council could take a look and say, oh, that makes sense, or maybe it doesn't. That, so that might be the, the way that allows you to proceed, but also gives that future user, you know, a chance to come to the, to the electeds and make a request to expand that restriction.
Yeah, that certainly makes sense to me. Yes, Alan.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, from what I'm hearing in general, it, it sounds like what you're doing is suggesting that, um, you'd be allowing office uses by right, but anything else would be subject to a conditional use. Um, the only drawback with that is that conditional uses go to the planning commission for approval, not the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
I think the idea might be that the DA would limit it, and then it would be a DA modification, back to council to expand that use. In order to, because you're, you're exactly right, in order to allow this body to make that future review.
Correct.
All right, okay.
Correct. Yeah, it would either, if, if, yeah, correct. It would either be a conditional use permit or it would be a requirement of the DA where you'd have to do a modification. If you did a modification of the DA, then it would have to go to a neighborhood meeting as well.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor M. Pro.
I also have a question for, uh, Deputy Chief Monjerno, and maybe the applicant can answer some of his questions. You mentioned earlier that it isn't, this project doesn't meet code. Are there certain specifics that he could elaborate to help us understand what's missing or what needs to change?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counselor M. Pro, uh, it's an easy fix. It just, the driveway is too long, and it just needs a turnaround in it. So they can just make a circle drive out of it, and it'll be fine. Uh, make a horseshoe out of it or something. Uh, right now, as it sits, it's more than a hundred and fifty feet deep. So we would have to back all the way out of that, and so they can just fix the parking lot layout. If the mayor is looking at rearranging the, the building locations, then that would, that would fix it. It, it was a simple fix.
We certainly have more than adequate parking that we could eliminate some of those spaces to do a horseshoe as well.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
Just a, just a closing comment. I appreciate your concerns. I know we all, and we also appreciate your desire to stay in Meridian, right, and keep your business here, and, and there's a lot of hoop jump through to try and make that happen. So thank you for, for sticking with us and being patient through this process. And, and I think, it sounds like there's some common ground on a way that this project can go forward, um, and be successful. One of the things that I think that makes it appealing is the type of use you're doing in the south portion of this. Is a lower intense, lower traffic. Um, it, it seems to fit here better as a type of transition, and so the, the desire to limit a DA condition to office on the north um, tries to capture that same good thing that you're doing with, with your business relocation, so much appreciated.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor M. Pro.
I don't know if this is a question for staff. I assume it would be, but let's say at some point in time that Land Solutions decided to sell their property and another user came in and wanted to divide that space. I just have a lot of concerns about, you know, the, the possibility of that almost five thousand square foot building now becoming, um, a space for multiple businesses. Is the DA limiting that to an individual user, or what's, is there anything we can do to make sure that that doesn't get converted into three different, um, flex spaces, and then now you have multiple businesses in here, and it becomes sort of a small business park instead of individual users?
Um, Counselperson, at this point, there's nothing in the DA that limits it to just one user for either one of the buildings.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Holborn.
Question for Alan. For Land Solutions, our building's forty-eight hundred thirty-five square feet. And the, what, what is required parking, number of parking spaces for that?
It's one for five hundred. So one parking space for every five hundred square feet. They're significantly over. I think, I think we came up with it being ten parking spaces for each building, and I think they have seventeen for each building.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Counselor Holborn.
Just a, a comment on that. I, I think that might be the limiting factor, is how much, if there is a change in the future, I'd like to think Mr. Hanson will be there for a very long time and be very successful. But, uh, parking, you know, if, if someone wanted to construct a two-story or three-story building on the north side, for example, parking may limit that. So we do, we do have some built-in constraints there for any massive structure that, that might be proposed down the road. And, and same for, for the Land Solutions building, if that ever were to be sold, it could be sub-rated, but as long as there's enough parking for that, you know, you can have three offices instead of one. But that's my thinking on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor M. Pro.
To that end, uh, there are possibility that that property to the north could be purchased and converted into parking? I don't know who, I thought I had read that the ACHD owns that piece. But...
I can comment on the owner to the north. The owner to the north is, um, Signee Blackman. She's, uh, on the other side of that vacated right-of-way there. And she's, has held on to the piece since ACHD, they kind of divided around her with the new orientation of Bentley and removed her house, and so she had to move. But she's held on to the property for future potential, you know, sale for her. Um, so ACHD only, she still owns that fifty-five-foot strip there is all, so her access is off of Bentley. They have a curb, uh, cut, um, coming off of Bentley for access for, for her property there. Um, and we, to comment on the vacation of Bentley, it just isn't conducive for us to try to vacate that where power lines and all the utilities that are in there, it would just be encumbered by easements anyways if we tried to vacate it. So that's why we've chosen not to include it in our application for the vacation, because it's just, it would be encumbered by idle power easement with the overhead power lines that are running through there right now.
Counsel, and as we head into this next phase, I think this is why it's this, even simple infill projects create challenges with transition and everything else, and that's why infill is a little harder. But, you know, from my perspective, I don't think anyone, you know, despite, we, we did look at the changes to the comp plan, having a residence next to this road does not make sense. Commercial does make more sense, business. I am concerned long-term about the impacts of the roundabout on these properties, um, access, uh, those elements. I think that there's, uh, I always trying to figure out where's the right place in the process to actually get something that you know, everyone feels comfortable with in terms of layouts and other elements. And, you know, from that perspective, I wish I personally was more comfortable than we had the right layout with the right fire issues addressed, but that will come, I get it. But when you're annexing in and you're, you know, putting this up next to, uh, other homes while not in the city today, maybe someday will be, you want to get it right, from that standpoint. So I think at least for now, as good as we maybe can hope for until it gets a little further along, but there's still a lot of questions in this area, the transitions and developments.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
Questions from the applicant or staff? I'll go ahead and move that we close the public hearing on H-2020-0078.
Second motion.
Have a motion, second public hearing, second discussion on motion. If not, all this is favorable, certified by Saint I.
Aye.
Opposed, the I. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Morton.
Make a motion that we approve H-2020-0078. Make a motion that we approve H twenty-two zero zero seven eight, uh, seven eight, um, after considering all staff applicant, um, comment and the testimony we received in writing, um, in preparation for today. It's, your comments on infill are spot-on, Mr. Mayor, that there are going to be some kinks and wrinkles when we try and do it, but I think this project does a great job, um, and it's appropriate. Appreciate the staff doing the good work to facilitate what can be a good, uh, transition here. Uh, I think the, the DA that goes along with this should limit the use to office uses, understanding that a future, current or future owner might come to the, a council and request to modify that at some future point. But for the purposes now, that limitation seems to be acceptable to the applicant and appropriate, um, as part of the admission of this, of this project.
Second the motion, Mayor.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
It's kind of a motion blended with some discussion, so...
Yeah, yeah, it sounded like you were inserting a DA provision-
Yes.
-without officially saying it, but I think the second-
That was my understanding that the DA was inserted into that motion.
Correct, correct, without limitation.
Yes. And, Mr. Mayor, to comment-
Uh, Councilman Holborn?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, appreciate Mr. Hanson working through the city with this process. It's true, being the first one is a little bit harder sometimes. Um, there's lots of concerns by the neighborhood, we weren't overly happy about the changes that were made to begin with. But, uh, that's why we want to make sure we get it right the first time, and, and have a quality place that, uh, works well with the neighbors, and, uh, the access and everything else that's there. And of course, uh, hopefully the neighborhood understands the roundabout, and that is a future issue, and that is an Ada County Highway District item, that we don't have that control over. But, uh, that is certainly something that, uh, uh, they need to be aware of and, and deal with if, if that comes about in the, in the near future.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Barrow? Strater?
Aye.
Holborn?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much for being here, appreciate it very much, and good luck. Council, next item is item twenty-six, under Department Commission Report. So it'll be a presentation on the city survey results, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Evening, Mayor and council members, can y'all hear me, first of all? Good to go, and hopefully you can see the screen, we'll try and put it in slide two of presentation, see what happens. Still visible. All right, um, well, I got the pleasure this evening of presenting the twenty-twenty community survey results from our most recent survey, which hopefully, we, we shared this with you last week, you've had time to read through it. I think one of the things to take away from this is, there's a ton of data inside of this, so, um, feel free, we'll have a discussion, um, answer any of the questions that you might have. Uh, but sort of my motto in looking through this, um, overall, is that citizens are very pleased with the city of Meridian, and what I like to say is, and there's work to do. So I think that's just common knowledge. So, we're on through the survey today, uh, that was administered by ETC, same company that's done it for the last two years. Their project manager wasn't available this week, uh, to present, so I'll, I'll be doing that for you. We'll go over the purpose and methodology quickly, um, talk about the high-level bottom line up front, get into some major findings that we see, sort of go through a summary, and then have some discussion and questions that, that you all might have. Uh, so our purpose is pretty straightforward, to assess the satisfaction of the citizens, um, and help us look for priorities across the community. We also like to look at the previous surveys that we've done, and look at the trends and how we compared to prior years, um, engage our performance nationally and regionally, and so, again, pretty straightforward. So for some of you, this may be a repeat, um, and for some it may be new, but the methodology of the survey, um, it is a statistically valid survey. It was a, wound up to be a seven-page survey that, um, director's team and, and city team and leadership, and you all had a chance to review before it went out. Again, it's the third one we've conducted. It's a mail-in survey that ETC, the, the consultant had sent out by mail, and then once people engage in that mailing, they had the option of doing it by mail or online. Um, we got back over seven hundred surveys, which exceeded our goal of five hundred. Um, and if you get into the statistical conversation of survey sizes per population base, the seven hundred responses was far and above what we were looking for, um, as the city of Meridian's size dictates. At a ninety-five percent confidence interval in the survey, with a plus or minus three-point-seven percent margin of error, uh, which was very good overall, we were targeting a ninety-five percent confidence interval with a margin of error of five percent. So, get within those thresholds as well. Uh, location, for your purposes, a quick map of the location of the survey respondents. This really just represents the, the survey respondents at a good representation across the city. There's certainly areas that maybe they didn't fill it out, uh, as many, or as much as in some areas, but the map clearly shows good distribution across the city. Um, so I think that's good representation. Uh, demographics-wise, if you had a chance to review, pretty balanced, uh, across the range of demographics. So gender was balanced, age of respondents, we had five categories, tenure, roughly ten to twenty-year, um, demarcations, nearly twenty percent for everyone, uh, so very balanced in respondent age. Most, which is not surprising, I'm sure, most live in a single-family residence, and most of those folks own a single-family residence, um, just based on our demographics in Meridian. That's not too surprising. Uh, what is surprising is the length of time that folks have lived in Meridian. I think as we start to see these, um, surveys continue, over half of the people that took the survey have been here for ten years or less in Meridian, and I think that's something to maybe put in, into your mind and think about as you think about actions and desires and expectations of people moving forward. And the income levels were pretty broad, sixty-two percent were between thirty-five thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand of annual income, so again, a pretty broad distribution in the demographics in that category. So the bottom line up front, I think there's sort of two takeaways. One, residents' very positive perception of the city overall. Uh, you can see there ninety-one percent rated Meridian as an excellent or good place to raise a family and to live, uh, at, at the high level, those are two good, uh, returns and metrics. Um, skipping one, the satisfaction is also much higher in Meridian than it is in other communities, whether regionally or nationally, and so those two things are very positive. The next two points, um, talking about the work to do. The opinion that the city is headed in the right direction, that was something that stood out to, to our office. Uh, there was a ten percent reduction that, that, from people who said yes, the city's headed in the right direction. And I think you'll see the priorities throughout the survey sort of drive that. Uh, but it was a ten percent reduction from the last time that we had the survey in twenty-seventeen. Um, and again, the top priorities at the bottom of the slide here, uh, to work on over the next three years. Nothing that I don't think you have all heard, roads, transportation, education in schools, growth and development. And to some degree, I believe that that, those three things play directly into people's opinions of whether or not the city's headed in the right direction. You know, as, as growth has been so fast, you've heard it, you hear it at council discussions when it comes to planning applications, I think there's definitely a nexus there. Um, so digging a little deeper into the first finding about the positive perception, and again, we won't touch on every single detail in the survey, again, there's a lot of data, but if you've got questions, feel free to ask, and we can address those as well. But overall, the perception and, uh, of the community and various factors, very positive ratings for, again, places to raise a family, places to live, ensuring public safety, communication, the list goes down, and we can compare ourselves if we want to drill down into the data nationally and regionally as well. I think it's just a good summary overall, that the city is, is doing good work, and is, um, doing work that the community values. Uh, this is one that I always like to highlight, because it really touches on a key component of how we're able to provide that great service, and it's really from the employees. Um, you know, eighty-five percent satisfaction rating for greatly exceeds or exceeds expectations on the customer service from city employees speaks volumes to the, the quality and the care that the city employees provide to the customers. I think that's something to highlight every chance we get. Um, and again, additionally, overall quality in life rates very high, overall quality of city services, these are all north of eighty percent, um, and is an ideal place to live, right at eighty percent. So, very good comparative for how Meridian does. This metric related to the tax dollars and how the city uses its tax dollars, right in line with the past two cycles of surveys, I think we've been plus or minus one percent, um, of the rating, roughly seventy-four percent are in that category of, of ten to seven rating. Um, so again, a very good, very consistent, um, acknowledgement that the city and the council members and the mayor involved with the budget process using taxpayer dollars wisely. So I think that's a, a good, um, accreditation to you all, and to the leadership team, and to the staff who do the work day-to-day. Um, here's just some very specifics on overall ratings of city services. You can see fire, rescue, city parks, police department rating right up there at the top. Well over eighty percent, pushing ninety percent on some of those as well, um, ninety-five percent in fires case. And then, walking down the line, again, our core services are very well-received and very well-delivered, I think. And so that's all the, the, the good stuff. Here's a, just a distribution map that shows generally, across the city, everybody believes, of those who took it, that the quality services are exceeding expectations. As a place to live, here's another, um, pictorial map that sort of, sort of shows the same thing. Excellent to good response as a place to live across the board in the city of Meridian. So it's sort of validation, continued validation that things are, um, well-delivered in Meridian. Then we move into maybe some action items, and major finding number two, about the city headed in the right direction. And I want to highlight these, because I think, again, I touched on this, but I believe that many of these are related. So what I did here was, we captured, uh, with the red arrows, those that are significant decreases since two thousand seventeen. And you can see generally, those are things that have fallen roughly in the ten percent drop range. Um, the city headed in the right direction, a ten percent drop. City managing growth wisely, fourteen percent drop. And the three at the top, quality housing, sense of community, enhancing the quality of life. Really, looking through the data, looking through cross-tabulations, looking through information and responses, they seem all inter, intertwined, and they seem like the big standout category of things for the city to work on over the next few years. So that, that's a key takeaway in, in my mind, looking through this data and these responses. Uh, this is a, a little bit of a breakdown of those responses, I think. You can see, certainly there are some that have increased in ratings significantly. Police, uh, law enforcement services, sewer service, water services, code enforcement, communications. And then yours, you see some significant decreases drilling down a little bit into building permit services, planning and zoning, recycling services, I know. And I think there's a lot of discussion to be had around these, we may have some of these questions come up. We'll take a stab at the fact that, you know, recycling alone, is there more that could be done? Likely, have we done a lot in the last few years? Yes, also the recycling markets overall have been in turmoil for the last three years. And so that may just be some of that frustration about the, the services that people really want versus what's currently available nationwide. Building and permit and planning and zoning services, again, I think a good follow-up question to this might be of those who have used planning services and building services directly, I think you might get a different reaction, whereas some people might be keying on the fact that growth is a driver of their dissatisfaction or, or decrease in action, and they may just look at planning and zoning and by nexus say, yeah, I don't like that either. So something to consider as we look at that, um, a little more deeply. Uh, additionally, the trends, you know, we've increased in over half of the eighty-four areas that we measure, which is a great, uh, great statistic, stayed the same in about six of them, and decreased in thirty-one of them, uh, which we touched on a handful of them briefly. So, you know, this is a summary of some of those notable areas. Enforcement and dilapidated housings, cleanup of litter, those things have all improved. Quality and number of pathways and for walking and biking, although I think there's still work to be done. People see good increases across the board, across the city. Quality of code enforcement, abandonment of vehicles, all that is good stuff. Um, and as we mentioned, the notable decreases, or the notable, noticeable satisfaction decreases. Managing growth, growth and development, um, sustainable conscious environment, enhancing the quality of life and housing variety of options across the city. So we've touched on all those, it's just a summary of that trend analysis, um, and I'm sure we'll have discussion on some of these as well. Uh, major finding number three, and I do, I go through some of this quickly, because it is across the board with, when comparing ourselves to other cities, regionally and nationally, Meridian consistently comes out well above others. So here is a place to raise a family, we're at ninety-one percent, uh, compared to the mountain region in the US. We're significantly higher, same with a place to live. A place to work is also higher significantly. And even as we talk about growth as a major, um, area of decrease since two thousand seventeen, we're still consistently higher than, than regional areas and national areas. I think that, that's something to remember. Uh, quality of life items that relate Meridian to regional and national, uh, standards. Again, customer service from city employees, that's a very drastic difference in our city employees and the customer service that they provide compared to the national and regional metrics, which is great. Speaks volume to the work that they do. Overall quality in life is higher, quality of city services, again, significantly higher, and the value received for the taxes, I think, again, testament to you all and the leadership putting together budgets and expending them, um, significantly higher than the national and regional trends. Um, and again, you know, we touched on the city moving in the right direction, yes, we had a ten percent drop, but again, we are still consistently above the national and regional averages for that. Um, again, here's some core services, they're all consistently higher, um, for the most part. Again, you can see recycling services at the bottom, fairly close. So I, you know, again, to me, that sort of says recycling markets overall, recycling practices overall, probably some nexus and consistency in the challenges of, that the recycling markets have been facing. But other areas, traffic enforcement, code enforcement, communications, consistently higher, even the trash and garbage services, as you dissect that from recycling services specifically. Um, ratings of parks and recreation services, again, many are consistently higher, um, as you go down through interest, interest, interestingly, excuse me, number of pathways in walking and biking, little lower than the national and regional trends, I think we've got some work to do there. But I also think to some degree, that's sort of some of the challenges that the Meridian city and the, the geology just play into, and we have challenges to overcome in that, that regard. But again, very good ratings compared to ourselves, um, nationally and regionally. Public safety, ratings consistently above the national and regional averages from EMS, fire response, police response times, overall feeling of safety, which is a very important metric for our community, ninety-two percent compared to the regional and national averages of, you know, roughly sixty-five to seventy percent. Again, very, very positive ratings. Uh, visibility of neigh, police in neighborhoods as well, is, is above the national average and the regional averages. Uh, we get a little further down into code enforcement satisfaction ratings, uh, again, specified abandoned junk, abandoned vehicle removal, cleanup of litter and debris, weed abatement, consistently higher than those averages. So, you can see these trends, again, with communications, continue to show very positive ratings, as we walk through these slides. Uh, and then we move on to the top community priorities, which I think sort of take into play the, the action items of, of where we go over the next few years as a city, as we head into the next cycle of survey respondents. And no surprise, roads far outweigh the number one choice of anything else, but really roads, transportation, growth and development, and education and schools. Those three things far outweigh, in people's minds, the, uh, the rest of the items that we asked about, starting with affordable housing and walking on down. So I think that gives us a pretty clear guiding light, some of these things you all and, uh, the city staff are already engaging on. If we talk about education in schools, uh, we'll get into some summary slides, talking about the efforts with the staff position that was recently hired in the planning department, to have conversations with the schools and the transportation agencies. Um, again, this is, if we look at an important satisfaction rating, which the consultant did put together for us, sort of takes the, the importance rating and the satisfaction rating, runs them through mathematical calculation to give us a, an importance satisfaction, um, ratio. Planning and zoning services clearly out, out at number one. Again, I will say that, you know, I think a curious question would be, of those who have used the planning and zoning services, what's their satisfaction level? And I, I bet we'd see a different rating, so it's something to keep in mind. Of those who have used the planning and zoning services, what's their satisfaction level? And I, I bet we'd see a different rating. So it's something to keep in mind. But that was rated number one and an important satisfaction rating and something that we can certainly look at. And I think we already, as, as this body is in two thousand twenty has already taken action on. And then some medium priorities which follow down much lower than the planning and zoning services that are cited up there, but. You can see the remaining services, some in traffic enforcement, recycling services, department, law, law enforcement department services. So. The list is there as well. So the transportation improvements that we touched on as one of the top three, clearly roadway widening is something that the community is looking for. Outweighs many other things, intersection improvements is the next. Category of fifty two percent, but clearly you can see roadway widening in people's minds is the number one thing that they want to see in the community of Meridian for the next two years. Diving down a little deeper, we asked about future roadway construction projects related to that last question. And we offered up five categories or five specific projects, whether it's widening Locust Grove from Fairview to Eustick, you can see there. Widening Linda Road, widening Eustick Road, constructing the overpass or widening Victory Road. And really, I, I think in my mind, the first four are very close, I think within five percentage points of each other sixteen, probably sixty nine percent to seventy. Four percent for those in the high priority to next highest priority. Certainly you can dissect each of those four and, and what people are looking for, you know, if you look at Linda Road overpass. Well, that's the majority of people's high priority. But widening Locust Grove is the majority of the higher priority to the next level. So lots of room for discussion, I think. You know, any action taken on any four of those really drives and would show progress, I think, over the next two years. This was an interesting question, I think, for, for you all to consider, you know, we asked the question, if a bond measure were placed on a ballot. Would there be support? Fifty percent of the people said yes, twenty one percent said no, but twenty nine percent said they don't know, meaning in my mind. You have to, to work to provide them more facts on what that means and you'll have some mix of that twenty nine percent going one way or the other. We didn't identify this as a Meridian ballot question. We identified it generally as a bond question. I think this is helpful information for our agency partners as well at the highway district and the state as well. So curious piece of information to share with you. And then some other findings in general. Communications wise, I think we, we continue to look at communications as a component of getting information out to people. But also looking at the communication and the feedback we do receive as ways to help push new information. And also as a way to help guide what sources work for us as a community, where, where are people getting their information? You can see the majority of people are getting their information from social media and the websites, even emails, those are up. Pretty significantly from past years. In fact. If we look at emails from the city, that's a twenty five percent increase from two thousand seventeen and where people are getting their information by email. That's a, that's a big jump. If you look at utility bill flyer information, overall since two thousand fourteen, that's been a fifteen percent decrease. From two thousand fourteen with an eight percent decrease since two thousand seventeen. So we start to look at. Overall, as a community, how do we continue to provide information to those that get their information in these various ways, but also get the biggest bang for our buck? We've looked at cross sectional data and there's not too much of a variance across the age demographics. There's some, but not a dramatic amount of who gets utility bill information compared to city website or email data. The, the majority of the cross tab, cross section of the, the survey respondents. They drive and get their information, information from website, social media and emails. And that's just a trend that we will notice and, and look to take action to and recommendations on how we get information out there in the future. This is something that we've asked in, in the past three years. It's something that always comes up, seems to come up at the legislature and conversations. With the association of cities, so we figured that we would share this. Not much change from past years in terms of who would support and who would oppose. In fact, it's essentially the same. Two thousand seventeen, we had forty two percent, thirty seven percent and twenty one percent. So pretty close, pretty, pretty consistent. So I think in summary, you know, again, you can see very positive perception of the city overall and the city services and the customer service that they're getting. But I think we have a good opportunity to make active work now and ensure that the city is heading in the right direction for the citizens. And we've got work that we can show to bring those, those numbers back up and increase them. Overall satisfaction ratings are slightly higher than two thousand seventeen as a, as a generality. And significant highlight, significantly higher than two thousand fourteen, which is great. Again, I don't need to, to, to drill into the fact that we're much higher than other communities regionally and nationally. But I think the top priorities is probably the key takeaway there in terms of things to work on, roads, transportation, growth, development, education, schools. So I think overall, few areas of action based on those. Maybe we look at areas of traffic enforcement and goals in action. There was some information in the survey that touched on a few of those. Jobs and economic development, communications evolution, and then the response to growth and development, you know, what are we going to do? I think you will see some nexus with our proposed strategic plan, which will be coming to you again in the next couple of weeks. To be talking about the new strategic plan as well as a follow up after that to wrap up the existing strategic plan as we close out the calendar year. But we're already making some efforts with the planning department and the unified development work groups, unified development code work groups that we're putting. Together through planning and the open space discussions. Again, I mentioned the, the new transportation school board coordination position and Miranda. Already engaging on some of these and already engaging with transportation solutions and partnerships. You have a joint meeting coming up with the highway district very soon. So that's another way to engage on that and opening up the dialogue on education in schools. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out, again, the customer service in Meridian is one to be proud of. Again, forty four percent above the, the national average with our customer service that the employees deliver day to day, something to be very proud of, I think. I think that's it. So we'll, I'll stop there and let you guys have questions, comments, dialogue, happy to address any questions that you do have.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Counsel, do you have any questions that we can attempt to answer without the assistance of our provider of the survey?
Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Excuse me, Dave, I just was curious about. The, the population that was mailed the surveys or sent the surveys. Did, did they look at or take into account the, the residents or type of property in which the resident lives? So I noticed that what I thought was a very high percentage of individuals that, that owned homes in comparison to the actual demographic within the city. So I, I, I don't know if it's just because those individuals were the ones that answered the surveys, but the surveys were, were really sent out to a greater variety. But I think it, you know, I would like to have maybe seen a little bit more commentary from individuals who lived in. You know, maybe town homes or apartments or, and, and not that, not that. One is better than the other. It's just, I, I, I really would like to see a good sampling of the different. Types of property owners and renters, because so many of these questions are related to growth and that usually means housing. And walkability, transportation, that kind of thing. And then my second question is, when they're in the survey. Was there any kind of disclaimers made in the questions regarding transportation and schools? To clarify with the participants that the city that, you know, ACHD and West Ada are, are the primary. Entities. Was that clarified or was there a disclaimer made? We, we oftentimes. Receive public comment and emails and whatnot. About transportation and we generally then redirect those individuals to ACHD. So I, I just was curious if we thought some of these. Answers were. Made with the maybe misunderstanding by the respondents that, that we have more control over it than we do.
Yeah, very good questions. Thank you for, for those, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pearl. I take the second one first. Clarifying which agencies operate or construct road projects. Yes, for instance, in question ten. Where we asked folks to prioritize which project of the four or five that they would rather see. We asked Meridian prioritizes roadway projects that the Ada County Highway District does not currently have. So. I don't think in every single question we made a point of saying. Roads are controlled by ACHD or ITD, however, what's your opinion on? We did have general questions that do talk about. What's your satisfaction with our partners and their relationships in, in terms of the offering, the services that they offer? ACHD in roads, ITD in roads. So overall, as a survey body, it was clarified, but we didn't ask on a specific question by question basis in all cases. To your first question on housing. We do ask the questions of the demographics across whether you rent or you own, whether you live in a single family home. Triplex, multi-family apartment, trailer home. And just by nature, I think the, I could get some statistics for you from our, our finance department on the percentage of. Single family housing ownership and residency versus other types, but. It is fairly consistent with prior years and fairly consistent with our demographics that. Generally, we have more folks that live in and own single family residences. The survey instrument was mailed out over thirty five hundred copies. And then the way, my understanding of the way the consultant operates is that as they get people to respond, that's how they start administering. Do we have a complete survey? Is it a valid survey? And then we start to take that count. And they look at the demographics as they start receiving those surveys. And again, they try to get a broad scope, but if we have the majority of property owners or property or residents. Who take the survey are property owners or single family property owners, by nature, there's going to be more of those. So I hope that addresses your question, but happy green clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Yes, Dave, thank you so much. It does. I just, so what you're saying is that if, if as responses start to come in, if, if we notice. Or if the, the consultants noticed that there was one demographic that's much, much higher than the others, then possibly they would have sent out more. Surveys and increased their overall population of surveys till, till we felt like we got an appropriate sampling. And at this point, they felt like. Ninety four, was it ninety four percent of the respondents living in and majority owning a single family home was representative.
Yeah. That's correct.
Okay.
Well, and if I could add, I don't know that we've ever asked them specifically to hit. It's been more about the geographic representation for percentage of where people live, not necessarily their housing type. That would probably have to be something else that we would ask them to specifically focus on in the future, if that's what we wanted, with something to that level.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, yeah, thanks very much, Dave, for giving us this overview. It's a complicated survey, so I appreciate you going into the key conclusions. The recycling one kind of puzzled me because we've expanded our services so much, but then I started looking at. What I, what I'm wondering about if we can do is when we get a theme in the survey, if we want to go back and kind of compare that to the. The perception heat map that we get from different parts of the city. Like I'm looking at, at page one nineteen, I guess I'd be curious to follow up. On recycling services, it seems like from what I know of the area in Meridian that has a neutral perception. I think that area may contain a lot more rental apartments. And I know that recycling services are not as widely available for multi-family units. And so that makes me wonder. Is there some kind of specific follow up we can do, sort of looking at the maps? And maybe talking with area residents or trying to drill down into what's changed or. If certain areas have specific concerns, because that's just one example where I sort of thought, it's interesting looking at the map. You know, there seems to be one area maybe where there, maybe they don't have adequate recycling services.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I think that's a great point. And that's the, the benefit of these maps that are in the survey. It allows us to look at key topics or topics that we so choose to look at. And find out, is there any cross tabular relation in, in this case in a geographical location or, or other scenario? So that's a, a good observation and one that we can. You know, pass on to the subject matter experts and say, here's an area to consider and look into this area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Dave, thanks. I, I love this stuff. This has been a, a lot of fun for me to kind of dig into this and. You know, I, there were a couple of other pieces that I pulled away that I think are, are worth celebrating today. One is. The ongoing tremendous work by our communication staff at all levels, seeing gains in that area, I thought was something to be really applauded. But the biggest takeaway for me was the increase of our public's view on law enforcement. Especially taking into account when this survey was conducted in the midst of a lot of civil unrest, I expected to see those numbers fall. And to see them actually gain a little bit to me speaks to what we've got going on in our community. I think that piece is, is worth celebrating. Dave, you kind of started this talking a little bit about, there was some work to be done and, and clearly I think in the, 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 the building services, planning department. We've got to figure out a piece that we can, can meet our citizens' expectations there. Clearly, I think our, our employees are doing a good job and, and you touched on that. It's, it'd be interesting to know how those people are responding and I'm. I'm curious if you and the, the department heads have, have kind of touched on, there's work to be done. And I'm curious if this is a piece that you guys have discussed and if there's any preview of things to come that you're looking to, to do to kind of approach this issue.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh, this is a great question. We've, we've talked at the director level about the initial results, because again, we just got them a week or so ago. So I think there is follow up discussion on what does it actually mean for the next steps? What types of improvements, what types of areas should each department look at and are there actions to come out of those? We had a high level discussion about the, the general results, again, being positive, but there are these areas to work at. And so that's something that, you know, I look to, to the directors and to the mayor and say, you know, okay, what's our next steps and what are our action items out of each of these?
Okay.
And Councilman Cavanagh, if I could add in, I think Dave, it's been a long day for him because we actually just shared this with the directors this morning. Where they, but they too got the, at least a little, the, a brief conversation on this topic and. Kind of to your, to the point, I mean, when I, when I look at this, you know, and the history of the survey. They love our services that we are primarily responsible for. I, I, I do take, I, I, I do toss out the community development one as not. I, I think people just view that as growth. They, they, that's not about their interactions with the department in my view, because. We, we probably need to find a better way to really get into that information and future surveys to determine what their perception of the work there. But the challenge I gave to the departments today is, you know, I, I don't know that we want to, you know, can you keep going up in police and fire? Or do we need to be focused on roads and schools and growth? And what can the departments do to help be part of that conversation moving forward? And so that's really what I challenged them with today is looking at these results and looking at where the areas that are not our core responsibilities, but. They are part of when a, this, when the citizens ask the question, are we headed in the right direction? I think that, you know, that's what they're looking at as much as anything else. It's not, that's not based upon, to your point, our, our police department. Not based upon their results of the parks and it's not based upon the results of our fire. Then, you know, those are our three public facing ones. The results don't, the results of the survey don't lead to that conclusion that that's where the focus and concerns are with the community. So. It was just the first conversation. We will have more, but I, I, I guess I would challenge all the council because it's not the first time you've heard it either. For three of us that, that were knocking doors this last, I guess about a year ago. We, we've heard this, roads, schools, growth. You've heard it, roads, schools, growth. So I'm going to challenge this council, what are you going to do about roads, schools and growth? And I'm going to challenge myself, my staff, what are we going to do about roads, schools and growth?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I appreciate that comment. Well, you know, one thing I, I think I'd be curious to see us all do some research on. Clearly there's a growth theme and a frustration in the community and. I, I think I'd appreciate just a comprehensive look at what other municipalities have done to, that have dealt with large amounts of growth. And if there was a way that they managed it differently and to sort of pull back. it differently, and to sort of pull back, like this is a macro-level frustration, are there things we need to take a look at? You know, I'm thinking there, there are places like Boulder and other cities that have taken different approaches to managing their growth, doesn't mean that's a good fit for us, but it would be good, I think, to make sure we're looking just at a really high level at all the possible tools.
And the one thing I would point out, just, again, this is relative, you saw where this, where nationwide, this is one area where we're in that nationwide and inner Mountain West is in growth in terms of people's viewpoint on it, it just happens to be so far out of whack of everything else in the survey that it stands out.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's important context, right, but at the same time, I, I, I share your feedback that, you know, door-knocking a year ago, I heard a lot of frustration, and I, I think a lot of the comments about maybe the, the planning and zoning function could just be, you know, kind of general frustration at things changing quickly, that's all.
Councilwoman Huglan.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was just, I was interested in seeing how, how many people that filled out the survey that were here less than ten years, ten years or less, and that was, that was surprising. For those of us that lived here a long time, you know, you can kind of sometimes talk to them, and there's that nostalgia of wish it was the way it used to be, and I used to travel from here to there in this amount of time, and, and, but it's just interesting to see how many that that had to weigh into that, that they've been here less than ten years and they're expressing that. Now, I don't know, I, I, it's hard to read into that, whether it's, it is true, things like widening the roads, it lags behind the growth, and the school, uh, infrastructure lags behind the growth, but also, i- it could be a part of, it, it's a phenomenon that happens anywhere, is it's, and I'm aboard, pull up the gangplank mentality, too, now that I'm here, don't change anything, just like some of us old timers, why are you changing it, you know? So it's, it's an interesting, interesting dichotomy that's out there, how you, how you handle that, and, and, and because on the campaign trail, you know, people talked about some frustrations, but glad about certain things, and glad this store opened up, and glad that we have this now, and we didn't use to have that, so it's just kind of working through that and, and seeing what, you know, more tact, at a tactical level, what is it those things are that we really need to work on? Because the frustration sometimes is expressed generally on some things, and then we can focus more granulally on those real items that really need to be fixed, so that's, that's a little harder, because you can't get all, to all of that in a survey like this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
So to that end, in the questions that did talk about our prioritizations, the top one was transportation, essentially, that they thought was the highest need, and so I think that is a good indication that when people say they're unhappy with growth, that's, you know, those top, that top item is really what it is that they're, they're pointing at, I mean, I think statistically that shows us that not just kind of a guess that that's, that's what they mean when they say they're unhappy with the planning, which is why I was asking the specific questions of, of Dave, Dave about how those were, how the questions were phrased to the respondents. But what I would say is that, you know, there's, there's, there's two things, there's either a really legitimate need for widening and additional roads based on traffic counts, based on safety, and then there's just a convenience factor. And truthfully, yeah, it is definitely, I've lived in Meridian for eleven years, it is a lot less convenient to get from one place to another than it used to be, but it's also made me have to be more purposeful about when, when I go places and where I go places and what time, and to make, it, it, it makes me have to be more efficient with, you know, I'm not going to drive down the road and go to the grocery store twice in one day, I'm going to do it once a week, you know, that kind of thing, and I don't think that that's bad, I think that's actually a really good thing for people to get in the habits of having to plan better and, and think more, you know, think farther in advance about how they move around our city, I think that is something that's good, and it's, I think there's some resistance to it, because, you know, people will be, want to be able to drive where they want, when they want, and I do too, but it's not a bad thing for people to have to kind of get into some different habits with that. And so the question really is, is do we really have a, a problem with roads, do we really have a safety factor, do we really have, you know, issues that are legitimate things that cause us to invest in widening a road, or is this more about, you know, convenience, I guess, and, and I don't know how to answer that question, I'm just saying I think that's part of what we're seeing in the responses.
Counsel, any further comments or questions this time, or if not, we can take this and digest it, and we'd, we'd love to have future conversations, either as we move into the strategic plan conversation, or offline with Mr. Miles or myself at any point in time, on what you may have seen or heard, or think might be a good output. Okay. Perfect, thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, item twenty-seven, item twenty-seven, ordinance number twenty-eighteen ninety-five, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance related to H twenty-twenty zero-zero-four-two Compass Charter School East Expansion for annexation of a parcel of land within the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Ten, Township Three North Range One West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of ten-point-five-zero-one acres of land from R U T to R fifteen, medium-high-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, you've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anybody who'd like it read in its entirety? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
My apologies for the dogs, I move that we approve ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-nine-five with a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, that's not the dog. So is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Item twenty-eight, ordinance number twenty-eighteen ninety-four, ask the clerk to read the title, all right, read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance related to H twenty-twenty zero-zero-four-three Gym Innovation School for annexation of a parcel of land within the southwest one quarter of the northwest one quarter of the southwest one quarter of Section Twenty-eight Township Four North Range One West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of eight acres of land from R U T to R fifteen, medium-high-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, you've counseled, you've heard this item read by title, is there anybody who'd like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number two-zero-one-eight-nine-four with the suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinances agree to. Do we have anything under future meeting topics? Okay, and do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson.
I move that we go into executive session, parry to code seven-four-dash-two-zero-six-A-one-A and F.
Second, a motion.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow. Schrader.
Aye.
Huglan.
Aye.
Byrne.
Aye.
All ayes, we adjourn to the executive session.